Welcome everyone to the town hall meeting tonight. For, I'm focusing on distance learning because that's the world we're living in right now. Virtual schooling. So, most of the topics that we talk about in the town hall meeting are virtual schooling issues that parents are having. But, you know, we can talk about anything in terms of the IEP or special education. So, you know, I welcome all questions from parents that want to ask me anything, but, you know, the relevant questions of the day are virtual schooling, and how to protect our children's rights during virtual schooling during the time schools are closed, and how to make sure that next fall is not going to look the same as it did in March, April, May, and June of this year, because we certainly don't want that to happen. So, that's what we focus on. So, you know, I want to start out, I want to first of all thank all the parents that are here tonight, because I just want to really get out there to parents. I mean, there's seven million kids across the nation today. More than seven million kids that are on IEPs. And from the surveys that all the attorneys and advocates and big special education people that protect the rights of kids on IEPs across the nation, they've been doing lots of surveys, including me, I'm going to be doing a survey in the next two weeks. They say that sixty, between sixty and eighty percent are not receiving their IEP and are not receiving an equitable distance learning plan. So, that's around five million kids that are not receiving an education. So, where are all the parents? You know, parents should be up in arms about this. That's why I'm offering the town hall meetings. That's why I developed the parent brigade membership, the monthly membership for parents, because I want to help parents in this time. I'm concerned about special education. I'm concerned about our children's rights, as I know parents are concerned too. And I know parents are overwhelmed and our mental health is, you know, at risk too. But if we don't stand up as parents and enforce our rights that we have, that IDEA gives to us, then we're going to get screwed. Our kids are going to get screwed, because that's what's happening. Our kids already got screwed for the past three months. And they're going to continue to do this, parents, if we don't stand up and learn our rights and learn how to enforce our rights. So, that's why I'm doing this, because I want to help parents. I'm an advocate, that's who I am. My daughter Chanel is on the autism spectrum. She would have never received an education. She'd never be who she is today if I didn't learn how to advocate back in the early nineties. And back then, there wasn't anybody. There was no one like me. There was no one that helped me, that was my mentor, that taught me IDEA or taught me my rights. I taught myself, because I was determined that my child was going to get an education and that what they told me wasn't going to be the future for my child. I was not going to accept that. So, you know, today, there's so many advocates out there in different organizations that are there to help parents. So, I just really want to encourage parents to, you know, use this time this summer to learn how to make sure your child's education is enforced next school year and that this doesn't continue next year. Because as you know, parents, we don't know when, if schools are going to open or not. They won't even tell us yet. They won't announce that, even though I believe they do know. I believe they've already got it planned, but they just haven't announced it yet. Because if they announce it now, parents are going to be up in arms and probably out in the streets protesting when they tell us that they're not going to open again. Okay? That's what's going to happen. So, they don't want to do that yet. So, that's what, my personal opinion. I'm not, I don't know if that's true, but that's what I think. But, uh, you know, so, you know, if they do open, I've talked about this before, that they are going to do their, there's plans in place. There's three options. And those, the first option is, I've talked about that, is that they're going to split up the population. They're going to send half the population to school two days a week while the other, while the other population stays home. So, it's half virtual schooling, half going to school and to the school building, and they're going to rotate the Fridays. Plus, they're going to implement social distancing, which is going to look like they're going to try to social distance our children. They're talking about possible partitions around the, our children's seats, taking temperatures when they walk in the door, instilling, you know, hand washing after every class. And there's an actual regime in place. And so, there's different variables of that that I just said. So, there's three options, three plans. So, that's what it's going to look like if they do open. Okay, so, we know that virtual schooling is going to be at least a portion of our child's future next school year. So, if we think about the first quarter, that means that our child would have gone nine months without an education, really, without an equitable education in terms of IDEA. So, we know that IDEA has not been waived. That means that your child should be receiving their IEP. I don't know anybody that is receiving their full IEP. Some children are receiving parts of it, but not all of it. So, they gave, they gave the grace in the beginning to be flexible. Now, it's been almost somewhere around, depending on when your school closed, it's going to be eight to 10 weeks that our child didn't receive their IEP. Okay? So, you know, this is all up in the air. They don't know how is your state going to hold them accountable? How's Congress going to hold those districts accountable? How firm are they going to be to this? So, that's up in the air. But we, nevertheless, IDEA is in place, meaning the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is still in place, means your child should have gotten their IEP in some way, shape, or form, which should have been virtually, because the Secretary DeVos said they must do their very best to provide the IEP in some form, other other form of delivering that service model. Because the service model before was at school. Now, the service model is most likely virtually, correct? So, now, there's all this confusion about, oh, no, it's voluntary. Teachers don't have to teach new material. All those things are misinformation. That's not implementing the IEP in a different service delivery model. That's not true. So, I mentioned on my Facebook Live before, when I was announcing, reminding parents that we're having the meeting tonight, I mentioned two things that happened this week. So, this week was the first week that most of my parents in the districts that I represent, parents in, they started doing virtual IEPs this week. Now, what happened in those IEPs was very interesting. What happened was, they stayed in when we, when I provided the parent agenda, because this is what I do when I represent a parent, is I develop a parent agenda for that meeting. It's parents, it's your IEP meeting. It's your annual IEP meeting for your child. You get to talk about what you want to talk about. That's called your parents' concerns and priorities for your child's annual IEP. So, I write that all up in a parent agenda, and I provide that to them prior to the meeting. So, what do you think's in the parent agenda? All the parents' concerns about virtual schooling, how it didn't work, how they missed fifteen speech and language sessions, how the teacher never got on virtually and gave instruction to their child. There was no classroom teaching. There was no accommodations. There was no support to access whatever they did receive for their child to do, and so on and so forth, working on the goals, where were the goals worked on, and so on. So, that was the parent concerns. So, what they did was, they said, oh, no, we're not going to be discussing virtual schooling during this IEP meeting. We are going to go through the IEP agenda, and we're going to develop the agenda just as if we were going to have regular school next year. And my question was, can you assure us that we are going to be having, school buildings are going to be open next year in the fall? No, we can't, you know that Valerie, we can't tell you that, because we don't know that. And I said, well, then, if you can't tell us that, parents' concerns are virtual schooling. That's the environment right now that children are receiving their education. Therefore, parents' rights are to discuss their concerns. They shut us down. We are not discussing virtual schooling. Violation of parent rights. Number two, what they did was, they said, and going through the IEP, if you don't know, parents, the first thing on the IEP agenda in the development of the annual is present levels of performance, P-L-O-P, the PLOP, present levels of performance, which is your child's present levels in all areas in terms of education. Their reading, their writing, their math, their comprehension, their social skills, their language, and so on. That's like the first three or four pages of your child's IEP, the present levels of performance, which then they determine that, which is where your child currently is at, and then they build the goals off of the present levels. That's how the development of the annual goes. So, they told us, when the parents wanted to talk about regression in the present levels of performance, because their child didn't receive an education for the past eight weeks, so they regressed in some of those areas, they said, oh, no, 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 we're not considering the time of virtual schooling for the present levels of performance. We're going to only talk about the day, the present levels of performance up to the day that school closed, and all of these past weeks, we're not discussing that. Well, Secretary DeVos said she's not waiving IDEA. That means all virtual schooling has to be considered. And an annual has to be where your child is currently to date in their present levels of performance. Another violation of federal law. So, these are some of the things that parents need to know, their rights, and know what's a violation of federal law and what isn't. Because if you don't, they're going to take advantage of you, and they're going to be doing things like this, and you're not going to know what to do, or what to say, or how to disagree with those kinds of decisions that they're now doing in these virtual meetings. So, those are just two good examples that I want to give out. And, you know, I see a lot of parents, hi Peter, I'm so glad you're here.
Yeah.
Did you, have you heard anything like that, Peter, in any of your meetings you've been going to, virtually?
Well, I haven't gotten that particular thing, but if they say, we're not going to discuss this, I say, well, it needs to be discussed, so if you're not going to discuss it, I guess we need to discuss it.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're, we're recording the meeting. So, you know, either we're going to discuss it, or you're going to lay on the recording, a violation that we're going to have to do something about, so why don't we just discuss it?
Yeah. That's exactly what I did, and they were not going to discuss it.
That's okay. Then you got, you know, then you got the recording and stuff. You never get anything out of the IP meeting anyway. You get something from the IP meeting, because they step in something, and then you could cash that for something that you need. They don't give any in the meeting.
Yes. Well, what I ended up doing is, we discussed the transition, because there was a transition as well to high school, one of them. And then we talked about the transition and some other issues, like she hadn't gotten her device yet, some other things that weren't in terms of the annual. But I said, well, we're not moving forward with the annual then, because we're not going to develop an annual based off of present levels that are inaccurate from three months ago. So, that's what I did, because we are going to disagree with the going forward if they're not going to agree to discussing the virtual education.
Because they're not present levels, they're past levels.
That's right.
The P is right, but the rest of it is wrong.
Yes. Why would we do that? Why would we waste an hour developing an annual that is a past annual? So, it was crazy. It was crazy. So, these are some of the things that they're pulling. And they're still talking about, you know, virtual schooling does not mandate new material, does not mandate new academic instruction, does not require a child to learn or a teacher to teach, and these kinds of crazy things that they're still, you know, promoting. So, that's what I want parents to know, that these things are a violation of federal law. They're not true. And you need to know how to address them, how to move forward, how to make sure that this is not the IEP that your child's going to get to move into next school year. So, yeah, those are some of the points I really want to make right now, because, you know, you're, when we look about, look at, you know, our children are at risk of losing one whole year of education. You know, we got to be preparing also, thinking ahead of how are we going to take, talk about compensatory education for next school year? How are we going to make sure we have that kind of documentation? And looking forward to those kinds of things. Because you got to remember, parents, the IEP, the IEP exists to prepare your child for independent living after high school. This is the purpose of IDEA. Independent living after high school, gaining competitive employment, so that your child can leave high school with the skills they need to get a job in competitive employment, not to get a job making three dollars an hour, which they do to a lot of people with disabilities, which is discrimination. And to possibly go on to continued education, to continue learning, either a trade school or possibly college. So, those are the things that the IDEA is in effect for. So, if your child-
Twenty USC, fourteen hundred D.
What?
Twenty USC, fourteen hundred D, and its purposes.
Yes.
There it is. You've read it, I can tell.
The purpose, the purpose of IDEA. But a lot of parents don't know that. They don't know that IDEA exists to, so your child leaves school ready for life, so that they don't end up living at home with you, sitting in their rooms, and they're dependent upon you for the rest of their life. And then when us, we get too old to care for our child, then they end up going into one of these horrible group homes and become a ward of the state. I mean, we certainly don't want that to happen for our children. So, this is the gravity of learning your parent rights, parents, and knowing what to do, how to get your child an education, that, and how this, that they're going to reach their potential in life, because all our kids have their potential. And, you know, don't, not believing their low expectations, what they tell you, your child's never going to do this, never going to do that. Oh, their IQ is this, so they're progressing commensurate with their IQ. Things like this are not holding high expectations and moving towards your child's potential, you know, supporting your child to learn. So, that's what I wanted to really make a big point about. And parents, you know, complaining on social media, saying, well, they're not doing it. Oh, I'm not getting anything. They didn't, they didn't do, they didn't do anything in my IEP. It went horribly. My child's not getting a distance learning plan. I'm pulling my hair out of my head, going crazy. All of that's not going to do anything. That's just going to continue. They don't care. They're not going to change, because we're screaming or complaining on social media, bitching with our friends. That's not going to change anything. They know, when a parent goes into a meeting, an IEP meeting, they size you up, and they know in about fifteen minutes if you know your parent rights, or if you don't. And they act accordingly after they size you up on how much does this parent know? Do they know their rights? Are we going to have to watch our Ps and Qs? Or are we going to be able to take advantage and just move along with our agenda? And that's what they do. And I don't think a lot of parents know that.
Valerie, I have a question.
Yes.
With respect to Santiago High School, they've not reached out to any of the parents I know regarding annual IEPs.
Did you get a PWN, a prior written notice?
No.
You probably, you might have.
Is that that generic form from the district?
Yes, it's the letter.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, okay. And it said, hello, we're not going to be holding IEPs this year because we're in distance learning and schools are closed. So, unless you want one, if we don't hear from you, we're going to, we're going to just assume that you're good with that, if we don't hear from you. So, what I did, after all, my clients got that PWN, I immediately wrote them and said, oh, we absolutely want our annual, and when is it going to be? And so, all my clients got it, because I responded and I demanded the IEP. If you didn't respond, you didn't get it. And they waived it for you.
There are deadlines for that response?
Well, we have two weeks left. So, you have, you can, you know, you can, yeah, always say, do it now. You have two weeks left of chances, but I think that chance is very slim now, because they-
Honestly, I don't even, I don't want an IEP. I just want it in writing that they're not doing the annual IEP.
Right. Well, why don't you want one? That's my question.
Well, remember, my case is, we sued-
Oh, because you've got a case going, yeah, yeah. And your advocate said, you don't need one, we don't need to do that. She, that's what she wants to do.
We're in the middle of an IEE right now, that just, you know, the independent assessment, we were supposed to start in March, and they keep putting it off, because they've been closed. So, that has-
Who's they?
Who's?
You said, they keep putting it off because they're closed. Who's they?
Dr. Passaro in Newport Beach.
Oh, so Passaro's putting it off, okay. Because I've had the district say to people, oh, well, we're not doing assessments, so you can't do your IEE. Oh, really?
Oh, no, no. I've been on their schedule. They've been most kind. They call and say, we're not reopening. The first time, actually, it was me who rescheduled it. And then after that, they've been closed. Passaro's been open for some time. They emailed all the clients, saying, call us to get you on the schedule ASAP.
Okay, well, I mean, he won't do it. You might be able to pick somebody else that's good, too.
Oh, no, no. We have the appointment. The first one's this second. Yeah.
Well, you're all set, then.
Yeah, I wanted to go with Passaro, because he came as highly recommended by, what was his, what was my, Danielle Augustin?
Yeah, Passaro's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll get what you need from him, what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you have a twice exceptional kiddo. So, he has a learning disability, and he has an extremely high IQ.
Well, has his auditory and visual stuff been looked at?
Probably not.
My son is extremely visual, and he's been, not diagnosed, but he has all the symptoms of CAPD.
Okay, well, then, why not have him, why not have him looked at and get something done about the CAPD? It's not even very hard to do.
Supposedly.
What was this?
Passaro?
Yeah.
Passaro's not an audiologist.
Right. He'll write in his recommendations that he needs to be seen by an audiologist, and then you're going to get a formal CAPD assessment done.
District admitted that he has an auditory processing problem.
A really long assessment by a psychologist that the psychologist, who's a district psychologist, told me, it is definitely CAPD. She cannot diagnose it, because she's not an audiologist.
Did it land in her report? Did it come out, did it come out somewhere in writing?
Nope. It's all the symptoms, but when she spoke to me, she told me it is CAPD.
Well, if the symptoms are there, then the district was on notice to pursue the thing. They're not supposed to say, oh, well, maybe so. They see this scenario as suspicion, and then they traipse gaily off without assessing it. They were supposed to assess it. They didn't assess it. You're entitled to an independent evaluation, since they didn't do it themselves. So, as for the independent evaluation, on a basis that they were supposed to assess here, and they didn't follow up. Because the kid, the kid needs to be looked at by an audiologist and get some help for this thing. You don't need to walk around for the rest of his life with a pebble in his shoe.
You know, this is interesting, because the psychologist's report, and Valerie knows this, the IEP, the triennial IEP was May thirty-first. The psychologist did her assessment after the IEP, because she didn't have time before the IEP. I know. It gets better.
Another violation.
It gets better. And this is where my son is between middle school and high school. We get to high school, no one is contacting me. I am calling everybody, trying to find out whose case carrier is. I am trying to get somebody to look at this report, to hold an IEP meeting, and they wouldn't. They just completely dismissed it. That's why I had to get a lawyer. I just could not.
Well, you need decent assessment. So, the first thing is, you need to have an audiologist, and a good one, which is why you need an IE, to look at him and say what to do. And it's probably going to be cat thoughts or something like that, that, you know, it's boring, but it works. So, whatever it is, so you get the auditory thing looked at. Generally speaking, you can expect he's got visual processing problems, because it all goes over the same wiring harness, so it's not very common that you have a problem in the one and not in the other. So, he probably ought to be looked at there, too. How's his reading?
He reads wonderful. His comprehension is awful, awful.
Well, then, he doesn't read wonderful. I can read Spanish, and as long as I don't have to understand what I'm reading, I can read Spanish. But can I read Spanish?
But that's what I'm saying, is they keep going, well, he reads well. I'm like, no, it appears that he says, like pronounces things well, but that is not the same as reading.
Well, so you just laugh. Atwood can read Spanish, and just fine if he doesn't have to understand it. Atwood can even struggle along pretty decently in Italian, even though I don't know any Italian. It doesn't count what you can read, you can pronounce. Reading involves getting it between your ears and being able to think about it.
That's been one huge issue.
You know how they are, Peter. If you don't have the, an assessment, so that says, okay, this kid needs, you know, reading, remedial reading program for comprehension, and a recommendation for vision and a recommendation for audiology, then they're not going to do it, because the just-
Well, you do, but right now, we're not talking about that. We're talking about what constitutes reading. That's not a question of assessment. They'll tell you the person is reading, and the person can't comprehend it. That's bullshit. You're not reading if you can't get it off the page and get it into your head and do something with it. So, no, he has a reading problem. Well, that's, that certainly puts you on notice that he might very well have a visual processing problem, because one of the things that does that is that you manage to work your visual system, even though it's wobbly, but it takes all kind of effort to do so, so there's not a lot of brain cells left to think about what you're doing. So, that's a real common problem. How does he track? Does he use his finger to keep his place?
Yeah, he usually is the ruler or some kind of street.
Okay, so he has a serious visual processing problem. You already know that.
Yeah.
So, if he can't keep his place without a struggle, it's no surprising that he doesn't comprehend it. How about you? If you keep on trying to pay attention to something, and you can't, and you have to keep paying attention to where it is and stuff, how much can you think about it? Where if you and I are riding along in a car, talking about your kid, and all of a sudden, you got to get over three lanes of traffic to get off the freeway, you're not going to be able to talk any sense about your kid, because you got to put brain cells into driving. So, that's, that's one of the big reasons that you get comprehension problems, is these things would ought to be routine, like using your eyes or using your ears or anything like that. You got to put in all sorts of work to make that stuff work and go, and so there's nothing left to think with. That's a very common reason.
Isn't your attorney addressing all these things, Rafi?
Our case is closed. My understanding was Passaro was gonna be-
Your case is closed?
Well, you know what I mean.
No, she doesn't.
No, I don't know what that means.
Well, she's done with her work, unless, you know-
But she didn't get all the assessments done yet. The IP isn't developed yet. So, it's case closed, because you got what you wanted, meaning the-
They agreed to do the assessments.
Ay, ay, ay. There's so much more to do, so much more to do.
You haven't got what you need until the kid's actually getting what he needs. Getting assessments isn't what counts.
Why I got her was because I wanted the tutoring. Everything else you can do.
But what if the visual and the auditory processing sucks, so that no amount of tutoring is going to work?
Well, I got the tutoring. I got the, what is that called? The technology assessment.
Yeah. Oh, assistive technology?
Assistive technology, and I got the-
But yes, well, see, what Peter's saying, see, we haven't talked yet. We haven't reconnected. So, yeah, the assessment is everything. That's how you develop the IEP. And so, you still have that long road that takes almost a year to do, to really get down to brass tacks in what the child needs.
Passaro doesn't know anything about the audiological end of things, because he's not an audiologist. And he's not going to be able to do the vision related stuff, because he's not an optometrist. He's not going to be able to take, look at the tracking stuff the way he should. If the kid has binocular vision problems, if the kid has manual cellular problems, none of that kind of stuff Passaro can look at. That's not because there's anything wrong with Passaro. It's because plumbers don't do good paint jobs, generally speaking. So, you have to get those things done that way. Now, from what you're telling me, that you have the district dead to rights that they should have had an audiologist look at this kid. So, that means you need an IE in audiology today to look at the CAPD, because it's just crazy making when a kid hears- because it's just crazy making when a kid hears stuff and he can't make sense of what he's hearing. And it's crazy making for everybody. I mean, if you're sitting in a room and for some reason you can't understand anything that anybody's saying, then you're not going to be able to pay attention to anything, of course, because who could pay attention to what they can't understand? And then they're going to say the kid has A D H D and talk about drugging him. You can't underestimate the stupidity that you face in this world. And, and, and they're, they're going to do that. I mean, anybody ought to know that if somebody can't understand what they're hearing, they're not going to pay attention to it and they don't have an attention problem. They have an auditory processing problem. The same is for the visual. You're telling me the kid can't even keep his place when he reads? Why should he be able to understand it? So he needs to be looked at by an optometrist.
Now you're telling me, hi, this is Demetra. Hi Rafi.
Hi, Demetra.
I'm going to interject because all your, Peter, I don't, I've never met you before. You sound really like
He's an advocate friend of mine.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's good. You're giving really amazing information and, um, I'm, I'm really learning a lot from you guys.
I've told you guys lots of times about vision and auditory processing.
You know, cause, cause you know, Constantine's doing the same thing. I mean, I'm sorry I'm mentioning his name, but like it's the same thing. Like he literally tells me, like trying to read Diary Van Frank. He'll go over a line and will say, he's like, I'm looking at the words and my brain just goes somewhere else and I gotta try to focus. So he's focusing on trying to keep his eyes on words. That's why comprehension is at a third grade level. And I ask him a question and he literally pulls answers out of his ass. And I'm, he's like, I'm, I'm just, I'm just concentrating on keeping my eyes on some letters. That's where he is.
Right. So what if he got left to actually think about what you're reading? And the visual processing problems aren't that hard to fix if you have somebody work on it that's any good. Now, I know Carla Hillier's good down in San Diego, if that's the part of the world you're from. Doug Steffi's real good over here and Katie Els is more than it.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, that's too far. Um, we usually go to, um, Dr. Coats, Coats in Riverside.
He's pretty bad, but anyway, whatever.
This is different than visual therapy because Constantine got visual therapy from Ketchum University. And I don't know if that was the proper, I don't know if that was the, I don't know, like
They're no good. Their vision therapy doesn't work because they don't do the stuff that needs to be done. The kid has primitive, retained primitive reflexes and they don't even look at that. If the kid has retained primitive reflexes, the vision therapy will not work. So I had a kid like this in Riverside. They spent $7,500 over 18 months with Ketchum, who finally said, well, you know, we sort of got him to this point. We can't do anything more for him. So we had Steffi work with him, do some things and another 3,500 bucks and he made some real progress.
Okay.
There's a lot of bad vision therapy out there and the problem is then the district say, wait a minute, the last time I spent $7,500 on vision therapy, I got doodly squat. I don't want to cut you another check for that. And who can blame them?
Well, Beth Ballinger is the best one closest to Corona. So that's usually who I send my parents to, but this is the thing that happens within, because we're in no man's land in Corona. It's very hard. So you have to drive all the way into Orange County or all the way into Riverside. And of course, Orange County has better services. So
Steffi's in Covina. That's not bad.
Hmm.
Steffi's in Covina.
Oh yeah, Covina, that, yeah, that's probably, probably about the same distance. Yeah.
And I, I don't understand Beth because in fact I got a kid like this. She's been working with him for two years now and he's in pathetic shape and he, she hasn't gotten anything done. And, and the reason, the big reason for that is she will not do anything about retained primitive reflexes. She knows their problem and she says, oh, well, I, I have OTs that I can rely on to take care of that. Really? What world do you live in? So she never addresses those kinds of things. And so here I got this one kid, they spent two years on things and he's sitting at his kitchen table in his house and he says to me, well, when I try to read, the letters crunch together and they, and my eyes tear up. And I say to the father, really? You think that Lyndon Mute Bell or something like that's going to work? When the kid's gonna, having that kind of a problem, that he can't look at what he's seeing?
Yeah, no.
I mean, it's an important detail, being able to see what's on the page already, you know, when it comes to reading.
Who do you recommend, Mr. Atwood?
Well, my favorite in these parts by far is Doug Steffi, who's also going to make you learn some optometry if you go to him. Uh, and Carla Hillier, if you're in that part of the world, is also really, really good.
And where is Carla?
Carla Hillier, uh, C A R L. He's a, he's a man. Uh, and I think he's in Solana Beach, Oceanside, one of those places.
Yeah.
And he's really, really good.
That's too far for those parents.
Exactly. I don't know who these people are.
Covina, Covina's drivable though, Rafi. Covina, this Steph, Steffi, Doug Steffi. Yeah. So that's where we would go then.
Okay.
Uh, Valerie, can I ask a question then? Because our I E P's coming up then. So are we opening up a whole can of worms with what we're discovering now? Because you know, what, what Rafi was saying about her son is very similar, you know, what, you know, what, what Constantine is struggling with, you know?
Yep. So we need to get another vision assessment done then because it's his try anyway. So we'll just get another vision assessment done and we'll, and you can go to this Doug Steffi.
I don't, is it, I, I think I need to talk off, after this with you a little bit more. Um, I don't want to, you know, be labor the point right now with this, but you know, now
First we get assessed and we see what's really going on and then we go from there.
I, I don't know if it's, okay, I, I need to talk to you more about it, I guess, because I don't think it's just like pure visual. There's, I, I don't know. I don't know what you call it. You guys know, but I'll talk
Well, it could be auditory too. So we're getting his try. So we start with this, with the, they, they need to do the cycle ready. So.
Yeah.
Well, I was a programmer for 37 years and made my living at it and this, and sped advocacy is pretty much the same set of schools, actually. It's the same debugging stuff. So it, it isn't much different. And one of the things that I learned, really like the first month I got into this trade back in 1977 and I got several more lessons along this line is when you find a bug, fix it. Don't say, oh, I don't know why it would have anything to do with this or that or anything else. How could that have anything to do with this or that? Well, I don't know, but sometimes it does. And if it works like that with code, you best believe it works like that with human beings, which are a lot more complex than code. So when you see that the kid has an auditory processing problem, you don't say, well, why would that have anything to do with this? If you see that the kid has a visual processing problem, you don't say anything that stupid either. You say, look, I know that the kid has a visual processing problem that's torturing him, so I'm going to fix it and I'm going to see what happens, especially since visual and auditory stuff is a whole lot easier to fix than most other stuff that's out there.
Well, you know, yeah.
Also you end up torturing the kid.
But see, the thing is though, Peter, is most parents don't even know what that looks like. They don't even know what vision and auditory is. That's why I'm always talking about it and teaching them what these other services are that are available.
Yeah, we only know like what we see, like, like we only know it in layman's terms, like, you know, he spaces out in the middle of reading a sentence when he's trying to read aloud. That's all we know. But for me, I'm like, I'm hesitant because I'm a little bit, sorry to say, I'm a little bit butthurt by what happened with Ketchum because we did the visual therapy. We thought that was the direction we were going. We went and all the way down to Orange County like twice a week and
Yeah, they're horrible.
Yeah. So he's still kind of spacing out. So.
Right. I don't blame you. But when you look, it's, you know, if you drop your keys in the backyard, there's no sense in looking in the front because there's more light there. If you know that that's where the problem is, that's where you gotta find it. And you know, only in sped world is it difficult concept to understand. When it comes to the finding your car keys, people understand this, but in sped world, understanding fails. I mean,
Well, cause yeah, they don't, $3,000 on the assessment and then possibly another, you know, 10,000 on therapy.
Can I ask how much is, um, audiologist, um, assessment?
Good work for about $1,500 or a little less for, for the assessment. Usually the work that's involved is around 500 bucks.
Okay. So about 1,500 to 2,000 bucks.
Yeah, probably. That's about right. Yeah. For the visual, of course, it's more.
Including the therapy?
The therapy's the cheap part. Cause the therapy, you're looking at something like cat thoughts, which is, I think including licensing and everything else.
Or audiology, not vision.
Yeah, vision is a bigger deal.
Yeah.
It can be a lot more expensive than it has to be though. I mean, you can, you can go and, and, and get it, do it computerized at home the way Steffi does and you can get the binocular work done for 600 bucks or else you can go to this lady and that I'm not, this isn't Ballinger, it's somebody else. They'll charge you 3,000 bucks for the same thing. And the other thing is it's nice if you don't have to go there every week.
Yeah. So it comes down to parents that, you know, do they, do they want to sit next to their kid and do it? Some parents just, you know, say, I can't, I don't, I can't do that. I work.
Not me.
When it comes to, when it comes to vision therapy, you have to do homework, no matter who it is. If you don't want to do the homework, it's not going to happen because it's retraining the brain.
Yes.
Anyway, there, you don't have to be an optometrist to, to check these things out. First off, does a kid keep losing his place? If he uses his finger or ruler or something to keep his place, there's nothing more to be said. The kid has a tracking problem. Um, does a kid keep skipping lines? Does a kid get frontal headaches or he can't look at it for five minutes? Then there are other things like, that show you depth perception problems. When the kid goes, especially if the kid goes downstairs and he runs his hand along the wall or along the banister more when he goes downstairs than when he goes up, that's a dead giveaway that he can't trust his visual system. And then of course you can do easy things. What I do with a kid, I always, I always use my finger and I'll bring it toward his nose and see what happens. Well, let me see, do his eyes focus properly on my finger? Until about two inches away. Well, if they don't, I'm not an optometrist, but you know, a teacher doesn't have to be a physician to say this kid is sick when they got a snotty nose and a hot head. So, so a lot of times I'll catch stuff like that.
Yeah.
And when you have a reading problem, you have to suspect that that's going on.
Yeah. But the, and then there's also occupational therapy and sensory integration that also overlaps a lot of these things too.
Sure does.
Which could be, you know, issues as well, especially for kids on the spectrum. So, um, yeah, but I, I typically always have the kids, um, assessed through, um, for sensory integration through, Suzanne Smith Rowley, who's
Can I just interrupt for a second? Um, I was wondering, my son did a couple of years of, uh, vision therapy and, and it helped with certain things. Um, and then his reading just sort of never got better. And now he was diagnosed with, um, dyslexia. So how does that all figure in? You know, I'm kind of wondering like, how did this all happen? Is it truly dyslexia? Is there something more with the, with the vision therapy that needs to be done? You know, I'm in New York, so
Needs a look.
What?
He needs a look from somebody that's any good. And I don't know people in New York.
Yeah.
Although, you know, I could find out. I mean, I know Steffi's on our list with about a thousand other optometrists and so he might be able to recommend somebody that's any good over there. I don't know. But if your kid has dyslexia, I have a really great piece from John Stein, who's a British professor, used to be teaching at Oxford and, uh, that talks about dyslexia and it's really amazing what he's got to say. It even tells you why it is that the words tend to float around on the page. I never understood that.
My son had that and when he was little and through the vision therapy, I mean, one day he was doing it at home and he said to me, mommy, the words stop moving around on the page. So that seemed, that seemed to be corrected through the vision therapy. But, you know, but, you know, then, you know, now, I mean, he still, he still struggles. He still struggles. So, you know, I had a neuroscientist
So it could be a motor issue, uh, or it could be something different. So I, I want to bring in Casey in this conversation because she specializes in motor deficits. Right, Casey?
Yes.
What?
Children on the spectrum.
Yes, for children on the spectrum. But, but yeah, he, he has dyslexia. But what, what could you add to, to that and, and where, and that conversation in looking at those things?
Well, what I've discovered is that there are a lot of kids that have underlying motor deficits that are completely ignored, completely unsuspected, um, because we're focused on the wrong thing, because we're focused on behavior, because we're focused on thinking that the child has a cognitive delay and all of the testing, of course, requires a child to have good, reliable motor to respond. And so I think it creates quite a quandary for these families to know how to advocate, what questions to ask, what assessments, um, to, to request.
Yes.
And what, what assessments are even relevant for their child. And that's, that's kind of where we are with a lot of families that I'm working with is, um, you know, every three years we're supposed to do these assessments, but unfortunately these assessments became, become a huge roadblock to the kids getting academic access or getting the supports that they need because as soon as they come back with a low IQ score or some of these other identified issues, um, all the brakes come on, you know, and there seems less of a need to provide supports and accommodations and more of a need just to provide a self-contained classroom or, um, you know, limited academic access and lots of review and repetition, which actually we find so many of these kids despise and become completely unmotivated because it's, it's not what they want, but they don't have a way many times to communicate that effectively.
Right, right.
All true.
Yes. So, um, so the, the motor aspect then, that would be identified through a sensory integration OT assessment. Is that correct?
You would like to think so, but unfortunately it's
Through a good OT, a really good sensory
Well, yeah, someone who's been trained to look for that, you know, I think there's so much information out, so much research out related to, um, sensory integration, but not really looking at the motor, the brain body disconnect from a motor standpoint.
Yeah.
And, um, a lot of emphasis, I know for years, I'm trained as a music therapist, neurologic music therapist. And for many years, you know, I focused a lot on sensory integration. We did a lot of, um, you know, we did brushing, we did lots of sensory work.
Yes.
But I never heard anybody talk about movement differences being the culprit, being the reason that a child couldn't speak. Um, you know, it was understood by me that if, and, and, and many of my colleagues, and I co-treated with OTs often, um, and our assumption was, and the I E Ps read, that if this child isn't speaking reliably or doesn't have adequate speech, then they don't have adequate cognition to support speech. They have a, a limited, um, language ability.
Absolute crap.
Yeah. And so, so many of the I E Ps even list, you know, the secondary diagnosis to autism as a language disorder.
Or a language, yeah.
And it's not a language disorder. It's a motor disorder. It's apraxia is actually what it is. And, um, until our, our research, you know, gets infiltrated into the schools and into the people, into the educators' thinking and, and the psychologists that we've worked with recently, you know, they say, well, we have to do these standardized tests. And by the way, I know that they're not relevant for these kids because I've been hearing about motor differences and apraxia and, you know, all these other things that could be underlying a child's ability to speak and answer, or touch and answer, or circle and answer, or manipulate things to show that they understand concepts that we test through manipulation of things. Um, all of those require reliable motor and that's the one thing that these kids really don't have.
Right.
So they're not assessing, you know, Larry's a suspected disability. The disability
I, I don't know any districts that, that, when they do an OT assessment, they, all they do is for, uh, holding the pencil, find motor and that's as far as it goes. I have to always demand, I want a, a sensory integration, uh, assessment by, and then I always, Suzanne Smith Rowley travels the world, world teaching sensory integration disorder and she, she writes for the protocols. So she's amazing. But, but it's hard to find someone that's qualified like that or because otherwise it's going to be a big waste of time.
Unless they've gone
I'll get decent assessments from a district in one thing and another, especially like assistive technology. But one thing I've never gotten, in which in California at least, I will never get, is a decent OT assessment. They never, ever do a good OT assessment.
Never.
Uh, you know, an ass is caught will be born a man, as the saying is, on the day that I get an OT assessment that's any good from a district. I know that I won't. The only reason to get an OT assessment from a district is to say, okay, this sucks. Now I want my I E.
Yep.
It's the only way.
I know. Is it like that where you are, Casey?
It is. Yeah, it's definitely that way. I mean, we have some good OTs in the area, but unfortunately, unless they've gone out of their way to learn some of these other, you know, to really study the latest research on autism and looking at these issues, they, they don't, they don't know. You know, we were talking
They don't know.
Yesterday, you know, um, when we, when we were having discussion, you know, people don't know what they don't know. And that's, that's the thing that we run into in the educational realm. We run into that in the therapy world. We run into that, you know, in parent education as well. And we can't blame people for not knowing what they don't know to a certain extent, except, um, you know, I think back about
That's different.
Yeah. If you don't, if you don't want to know, and, and that's where I get frustrated is, you know, in, in my agency, we have lots of good information. We have lots of, um, case studies. We have lots of things that say, okay, nothing else ever worked and now this is working for this child. And they now have gone from self-contained, uh, special education classroom, you know, preschool level work, and now they're doing high school trigonometry and they're motivated and they're, they're
I guess that's working.
You know, I think something might be working, but even yet it's kind of like, you know, we put the, we put the blinders on, we put the hands over the ears, la, 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 la. And, you know, And, you know, those discussions are so hard to have because there, there's such a motivation not to learn something new and just keep doing things the way that we've always done them.
Absolutely.
And, you know, if I know, and I don't work in the school and I know how to help them, but nobody in the school knows how to help them, then it's kind of like, well, that's, that requires change. That requires new attitudes, new policies, new procedures.
Open mind to learn something new.
Yeah.
Yeah, or they get offended when, yeah, it's very difficult.
So it is difficult and it's sad because there are so many kids that are really missing out on what they need.
Yep.
And have so much potential to do so much more than what they're given the opportunity to do. But until we can change those attitudes or, or start enforcing the things, you know, that, that happen in case conference committee meetings and IEP meetings.
Yes.
Um, you know, because I, that's one of the things that, that I keep seeing is families either don't have the resources to hire an attorney. We don't have a lot of special education attorneys in our area. Most of them are in Indianapolis, which is three and a half hours away from us. And it's really hard, you know, for families.
You're in southern Indiana or something like that?
Yes. Yeah. So if you know anyone, we love resources, but.
Say that I do.
It's challenging to, to get families connected to people that really can make a difference.
Yeah. And that's why I'm so passionate with, you know, that's, I have, I have an academy to teach parents. I have a, a professional IDEA to teach advocates. Because I want to, I want to build an army across the United States. Because if parents don't learn this stuff, that, then they're, it's just going to keep happening. Every parent that empowers themselves with the knowledge and at least to, to, to touch the tip of the iceberg, to note, to not get taken advantage of, then, then it's going to start holding districts accountable so they can't walk all over parents and put kids in misplacements and not meet children's needs, you know? But it's getting the parents to want to learn it and do it.
There's a lot that you can do.
Classes that I offer.
There's a lot you can do without litigating, actually. There's all sorts of things.
I know.
You can do, make it very difficult for them to do evil.
I, I could, I could more than most attorneys get through the IEP process. I mean, I, I've gotten seventy-five, eighty-five thousand dollar programs and never, never filed for hearing. And they get, keep getting it year after year after year. So it's very easy to get, not easy, but I mean, it's possible. You don't have to hire an attorney and file for hearing.
Not always.
Child's needs.
Yeah. And I love what you talk about Valerie, when you talk about parent empowerment, because I see that to be such a need. I see so many parents that have been beat down by the system, have been beaten down by years and years and years of going to these case conferences, not being listened to, not having their input really valued in the conversations about their own child. And, and parents don't feel like that either they're equipped to be empowered or that they have a right even to be empowered. That they have a even, you know, they don't trust their knowledge about their own child so much of the time. And I just want to like reset them and say, no, think about it. Like you are the parent, you know, stop letting them convince you that they know better. You know, you know what your child needs.
Yes.
And, and parents really need cheerleaders.
Yep. If I could just, you know, if they would just take some of my classes, because that's the first, that's my module one is, look, don't believe everything that you're told from experts or, you know, educators or even doctors. And you have equal power to every other person sitting around your IEP team. In fact, you have more because if you don't sign the IP, everything comes to a halt. And nobody else around that table has the power to do that, but you do. And, and that, you know, they have, they have rights. And so many parents say, I didn't know that I, that I could disagree and not sign, or I didn't know I could even talk during the meeting and say I disagreed with something. I'm like, yes, yes, you can. It's your meeting, it's your meeting for your child, not their meeting.
I, I reduce it to four things that people got to know. You got to know who you are and you got to know who they are. As Sun Tzu said in The Art of War, if you know your enemy and you know yourself, you'll be safe in a hundred battles. The third thing you need to know is your kid. And the fourth thing is the law. People don't want to know the law because they don't know they have to know the first three. But that, that's really an important thing. And you have to understand, first off, they really feel like they know it all and you, and you don't count for anything. It's right supremacy carried into the special ed world. They figure, you know, sixty years ago in Alabama, boy, you don't know your place. And now it's parent, you don't know your place. And I'm not kidding, don't think it's anything else. It's exactly the same attitude. It's exactly the way you feel. And just, just the way black folks, you know, especially the Black Panther Party said, you have to get Mr. Charlie out from between your ears, it's still true. It's still true. You have to get them out from between your ears and understand that, no, they don't know anything like they, like they claim to. You go and you're sitting in their office and you lose the high order digit in your age. Here you are, you're thirty-eight years old and all of a sudden you feel like you're eight just because you're sitting in the principal's office and they want you to feel that way.
Yes, they do.
It's effective.
It's very.
The intimidation strategies are effective.
It's the Newport, it's the Newport cigarette commercial. You know, you watch the thing and you're just supposed to know that if you just smoke Newport cigarettes, you're going to be rich and young and white and pretty and in the best of health and sitting in a boat in Newport Harbor. Now, if you apply a little rigorous analysis to this shit, you realize there's a problem with it. And it's exactly the same thing happens in an IP meeting. Don't for a minute think that it doesn't.
Yes, parents feel diminished. They feel like they don't have power, that they're the experts, they have to listen to them. They have to, they have to comply with whatever they say. And it's just absolutely not true.
You're eight years old, they're sitting in the office.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I just jump in and ask for clarification on something you said with, as far as, um, you know, getting the language that the child is not able to sort of get his thoughts organized, either on paper or verbally? You're saying it's, could be an OT problem, occupational therapy problem? Did you say that or am I missed, did I miss something?
It certainly can. A common problem is retained primitive reflexes. If you don't know about retained primitive reflexes, then you need to go and look it up and do some reading.
He did, he did a couple of years of that when he was younger. I did a whole, a whole, it was torturous, but we did it, you know, for a couple of years. So I'm just wondering if that's something though, that's still an issue now to look at.
Certainly could be. It's something you can have looked at. A good OT is going to look at that stuff. Unfortunately, for some reason, Rowley doesn't believe in it, which is why I don't send people to Rowley. I don't know why, because Jan Ayers talks about it being a problem. I just don't get it.
Really? I'm going to have to talk to her about that then, Peter.
I don't know why.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask her about that.
I have another question. So if you have an IEP and then a psychologist does very thorough educational testing and finds that the student has visual auditory learning problems due to really low scoring, visual processing is low. Should they, I mean, this is done, but now so what? How do we help this student?
Then you have an IEE done in those areas and that's when you're going to get actual recommendations, goals, accommodations, and possible therapy for those areas. A district OT assessment is not going to say anything. They're going to go, oh, look at the low scores. Okay, move on.
Right, the school psych, the school psych found these problems and it became their, since they're supposed to assess in all areas of suspected disability. Remember that phrase? Anyway, they suspect a disability, don't they? When they look at this stuff and they see that the kid is a disaster in these areas, they suspect a disability. So how come they don't follow up? So they should have followed up. They didn't follow up, you're entitled to an IE. So of course you have to wrestle with them, probably going to have to throw in a compliance complaint or something like that, or maybe you're going to have to file and, and stuff. But the fact is, those things need to be assessed and taken care of. I agree with Karl Marx on this. The point is not to understand history, it's to change it. And the same thing with kids. The point isn't to get some kind of a report that says what's wrong with the kid. The point is to come up with something that helps the kid.
Right, exactly.
Okay, but see, so I have all these reports and as I told you, they never did anything with them.
But was it an IEE, Rafi, or was it the district psych assessment?
That was the district psychology.
That's why they're not going to do anything, because the district psych doesn't do anything. You have to then go the next step.
Right, but they wouldn't give me an IEE or any of that, remember?
Okay, well then they can file.
I did, yeah. And now I have.
Well, they're supposed to file. If they don't want to give you an IE, they're not just supposed to say no, they got to file.
They have to file on you if they say no.
So you let them go for a couple of months, which is unnecessary delay. And then you throw in a compliance complaint and CD generally tells them, well, you didn't file, so you owe the IE. And then this where they can't give you a bunch of crap about who they give it to you by.
Well, I asked for Pissaro. I personally asked for Pissaro.
I understand that, Pissaro's not going to help you.
He's not the vision and the auditory.
Because he's not one of these guys.
Okay, but I went to an audiologist, okay? And they told me they don't do like educational kind of CAPD.
Well, it wasn't the right one then.
Perfect, then you don't go to somebody like that.
Well, I didn't know where to go, that's the thing. So now.
That's why you got to talk to people like us and stuff.
Tell you what, who to go to for an audiology assessment.
Somewhat, yeah. But in any case, you got to ask around. You want to find somebody to fix your car that's going to do it cheap and do it.
We can still do all that, Rafi.
You have to ask around.
Yeah, we can still get, you still have a lot of assessments to go through and to get the rest of it done.
I sent an email to the school and the district specialist saying, where's my IEP? It's whatever. And I also put in writing that I want an audiologist referral because you're already aware of his auditory.
You don't want to ask them for it.
No, you're going to get a crappy job.
I'll tell you who to go to.
All right. Well, I'm going to go to the one, the Stevie or whatever, so.
Yeah, that's for the audiology.
For the visual, yeah.
And then you need, and then you need, that's vision. And then you need an audiology assessment. And, and you probably need a good OT IEE too. And then you, see, it's the rule out game. You rule it out until you find, until you know exactly what's going on with the child. Then you know you have your IEP developed properly in all areas of suspected disability.
Right. Okay.
That's when you know.
Oh my God, this is insane, yeah.
Because the district, they'll have, the scores will be there. Sometimes the scores are the same as the IEE, but then the district assessment just gives you the scores and nothing else. And then the IE is going to go, now we're going to develop this, this and this. Here's the plan to address the deficit scores. They have to put a plan in place to address the deficits. That's, that's IDA two, where there's a deficit, you have to make a plan to address the deficit. And psychs don't do that. They just do the assessment, district psychs, they'll do the assessment, hand it to you, review it at the meeting, okay, my job's done now, goodbye. And they don't make a plan.
Or they come up with some crappy little accommodations and stuff.
Yep, that's exactly what they.
But that doesn't help. I don't want to hear, oh, we'll give you a one-to-one aid. Well, maybe you need a one-to-one aid, but maybe you don't. And in any case, whether you do or not, that's not the beginning and the end of things because a one-to-one aid is not going to be there for the next sixty years. And usually the one-to-one aid is because the kid isn't behaving himself and he's not behaving himself because he's tormented. So all they're doing is they're just giving somebody, giving you somebody to ride his ass instead of wondering how come it is that it's not working. So when, when the kid is sitting on a hot stove, you, what are you going, what are you going to do to make the kid sit still instead of getting his ass off the hot stove? This is how stupid things are in Spengro.
Yeah, well, I got for recommendations, teach my son to check, reinforce his own comprehension. His reading for meaning, how, who's going to do that? Yeah.
So you still have work to do, even though you got your tutor.
Well, you know why I got the tutor. It's mostly, our tutor is really good. She's actually, she teaches at Redlands University.
But if he's still, it's a Band-Aid. If you still haven't gotten to the bottom of the cause of the, of his learning issues.
I don't know if I told you, but I plan to pull him out and do charter or homeschool because I know exactly how he learns. But I need to get him help so that long-term, you know, he gets not a Band-Aid.
But do you see the, the point though? Like say if you have, if you, if you're sick and you, and you need to find out what do you have, what's wrong with you, the doctor does a bunch of tests and they rule out, rule out, rule out till they find the cause.
Yes.
So you might be taking some meds or do some plan in the meantime, but he still does the testing until he finds out the problem. So you still haven't gotten to the bottom of the actual issues of going on, why your son is struggling in learning, right?
Just from what you said, you know the kid has visual processing problems that are crippling him. You know that he has auditory processing problems. So since you know that he has these problems, you know, I, when I lived in Africa, I had a dachshund. And you'd throw a wiffle ball out in the lawn and he'd run around looking for it because it was great fun looking for the wiffle ball. And when his snout bumped into the wiffle ball, he'd keep right on going. He didn't want to find it, he wanted to look for it. And I, I run into this all the time. They don't actually want to do anything for the kid, they just want to find some kind of stuff. And well, you've turned on something you know is a problem. Well, let's not work on that, let's look at something else. You, you got to be smarter than that dachshund, okay?
I am so beyond, you know, dealing with Corona Norco. And Valerie, you know, I have, I could, you know, potentially homeschool him. I could, and I know how he learns and I know his interests, so I'm going to do that. But still, I need to know why, you know.
Yes, because he is intelligent enough to know how, what, you know, how to advocate for himself then, oh, these are my deficits, here's my strengths.
Oh, he knows, yeah, he's very well aware, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then that'll give him, empower him to move through the rest of his life to know what kind of accommodations he needs to be independent and go on to, maybe if he wants, he's good, wants to go to college, right?
He does, yes.
Yes. So he needs to know where are these deficits coming from? And, and how does he accommodate for them? And that's, answer still hasn't been found.
There is therapy or anything that he.
And Corona Norco is horrible. They will never do the right thing unless you make them. I never get them to do anything without filing.
Oh, they're horrible, horrible.
And so that's, so that's what we do is we file, they're horrible. So if they're not, they're not going to listen to the reason, to reason. So it's just a question of raising the price of doing evil for them until they get to the point where they figure, all right, we hate the kid, we hate the parent, but we don't want to go through this anymore. That's the only thing that works, the Corona Norco. They're one of the worst districts that I deal with. And three years ago, that wasn't true.
It's interesting to say that, you know, because the assistant principal at Contiago literally like will tell me like how annoying and like she just doesn't want to deal with me. And I'm like, this Melissa Baco.
Oh, I like it when they're that frank, especially if the recorder's running.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, they feel that way anyway, they might as well let it out.
Yeah, she said that once and I'm like, good, because that's exactly where I need to be with you guys, you know? So it's horrible. I never, I didn't have really bad experiences that I couldn't resolve myself in middle school and elementary, but high school is, I am just beyond shock with.
Because that's when, this happens every time. Because in, in grade school and, and, and middle school, they're not counting credits for the diploma. And, and, and they, and they slide parents along, they slide the kid through. The kid's really behind academically, but parents don't know. Then when they get into high school, all of a sudden, parents are shocked because their kid's so far behind grade level. And then, because then they're held accountable to passing real grades because of the credits. And that's when everything blows out of the water.
And that's where you have to be careful. And that's where you have to be careful. They want to get the kid out of high school. You want the kid to get out of high school being able to function in life. And these are two highly different things. The reason they want to give the kid a high school diploma is because then they can say, don't let the door hit you in the ass as you go. That's what the purpose of a regular diploma is, it's an eviction notice. And they want to give you that eviction notice as fast as possible. And if they can do it without actually teaching the kid, they're happy. That's what they want to do. So the, the district will sucker you into being their deputy to hawk your kid to torture himself for hours, working on homework, to get good grades so that they can document that he doesn't have a problem. Now, is that being a sucker or what? You know, a friar in Yiddish, okay? I mean, it's, it's just being played like that, so you.
Or they want to put him in the special ed class that they shouldn't be in.
Well, exactly. Anything possible to, of course, anything possible that they can to not do their job. So I let them crash and burn, and, and go learn somewhere else. The kid doesn't need to get high school credits. The kid doesn't even need a high school diploma. What the kid needs is to learn, and that's a different thing. Nobody cares that I never got a high school diploma.
And you know what? My son, okay, at 14, told the people at the IEP that, I don't care about my grades, because he has such high grades. He goes, I don't care, I'm not learning. And they're like, well, what's the problem? You have A's. He's like, I'm not learning.
Yeah. He's one of those kids, Peter, that, that.
Very good.
So high functioning, and he's so intelligent, that he, he can just do the work, but he's not learning anything.
All right, I'll let him in.
Well, I see.
All right, I'll let him in.
The time I spend.
I'll cook cake.
Yep.
Valerie, I have to go. Peter, it is very, very nice meeting you.
Well, great. You're in Corona and stuff, and Corona is one of the most awful places I work in. And Valerie and I have already talked about it. We got, we, we need to do a project in Corona.
You do, and it's.
Well, we're filing a group compliance complaint. I've got a bunch of parents that are.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
I will definitely see you when you come to town, but I have to run right now.
All right, bye-bye.
Nice to.
And hope to meet you.
You're coming, Rafi.
Bye, you guys. Take care.
Take care. Well, yeah, it's 6:12, so we went a little bit over. But that was a great conversation, you guys. Does anyone else have any other closing questions? Abby or Kathy?
Or even Iphone.
I, I was just going to ask if I can somehow get in touch with either of you that if you know anybody in New York, you know, regarding vision or OT or anything? Or if you know anybody that knows anybody.
You would have more.
Send me an email, and I'll talk to Steffi about it and see if I can find anybody.
What about you, Casey? Do you? Because you're, do you know anyone, Casey?
He's in Indiana. I know from here it seems like next door, but it's not.
It's definitely not. But what, so what I'm sitting here thinking is all the things that you're discussing and talking about how difficult the school districts are, it's not a California thing, it's everywhere. I mean, we have it, and it's, it's, it's disheartening, but also, I guess, encouraging that, you know, we, we can put our, our thoughts and our powers together to try to make change all across the country, because it's so needed.
Absolutely.
And so Abby, tell me more about what the needs are. I mean, I have some, I have some connections in New York, but I'm not sure if they're exactly what you're looking for. Can you tell me a little bit more?
He's going to be 16 in a, in a couple of months. So when he was little, he was diagnosed with auditory processing disorder and some visual processing issues. We did the auditory therapy, we did the visual therapy, we did retained reflexes. I mean, you name it, we did it. He, he has improved tremendously, but I, like I started to say, he, we just had a neuropsych, Val Dunn, and he came up with that he's dyslexic, has dysgraphia and dyscalculia. You know, and I know all this stuff sort of overlaps, and ADHD.
The ADHD tax almost certainly bullshit.
Yeah, probably a result of everything else that he has. So, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, did we not do enough vision therapy? Was it not the right kind of vision therapy? You know, did we not do enough work with the retained reflexes? You know, I don't know if there's, if I can still do therapies with him, or if I should just be looking for, you know, these reading programs, this Horton-Gillingham or something, you know, I don't know how to help him at this point, you know?
Well, I was 60, I was 67 years old, and I got some work done on the moral reflex that Steffi found. And I did, I did the exercises, and a lot of things got a lot better, and I was 67 years old. People get strokes, they lose their speech, they get the appropriate therapy, and they get their speech back, and they're all, right?
No, we just have therapy, yeah, at any age.
You know, and you look at the Cuban Revolution that went, and that from 1959 to 1962, they took an illiterate nation, and they taught everybody how to read. You know, so, and, and a lot of those everybody's were adults.
Right. Good analogy, yeah.
I'm curious, Abby, how does he feel about school?
He loves to learn, okay, but he's bullied terribly. He's always been bullied. And this past year, I've been trying now to get him out of the high school and someplace else, you know? So I'm, you know, I just was supposed to have a meeting with the district regarding that. I had a brief meeting, but being, we don't know what the state of affairs is in September, they kind of put me off. And they're, you know, now, we're supposed to meet again next month. So, but I mean, he loves school, it's just he hates to read because he can't. He fumbles all over. But he's always loved to learn, he loves to participate, you know? So he loves school, he just can't take the kids, you know, the bullying.
How close are you, I don't know where you are in New York, how close are you to Syracuse?
No, very, very far. Yeah.
You're in the city, right? You're in New York City?
Long Island.
Long Island. Well, you sound like you're probably from Long Island.
I, I, no, I sound like I'm from Brooklyn, which is.
Yeah, you don't, you don't sound like you're from Syracuse.
No. I, I would recommend trying to find a neurologic music therapist.
Why?
A lot of, a neurologic music therapist. A lot of what you're describing is neurologic. A lot of what you're describing is, is, you know, he's having trouble connecting the dots, so to speak, neurologically, you know, the, the, the math piece, the, the motor piece, like handwriting and stuff like that. I mean, all of that is.
Right.
Neuro motor.
He can't get, he can't sort of tell a sequence of events, like of the day, you know? He, he just, everything gets chopped up, and, you know, he just, nothing flows. You know, it's just very hard for him to.
It certainly sounds like a magnocellular problem, all right. And that would explain the dyslexia, it would also explain problems in sequencing auditory stuff. Does he have allergies?
Um, he was, we adopted him when he was 17 and a half months old, so, and he was congested from the day we brought him home for years. Nobody could really figure out why. I mean, I did food testing and all kinds of testing, and there were no real apparent allergies. You know, I did food rotation diets, you know, I did all that good stuff with him. But the congestion, I think, has finally gone away, and now he always has like a post nasal drip. So I don't know if, if it's an allergy or, or what it is.
I was making that point, because dyslexic people frequently have allergies, because many times they have other autoimmune problems, because the magnocell, their magnocellular cells all over the place, not just in vision. And anyway, I, I need to send you this article by John Stein and see if it looks familiar.
Okay, I, I never.
I don't know how to do that, because I don't have your email or anything like that.
I'd be happy to give it to you.
All right.
Should I put it in the, you want me to just spell it out?
That's one way. Let me do that.
Okay, I don't know if you have a pen handy. Okay, so it's.
Well, I got it. Well, let me get in here. I'll just send it right now. I mean, why wait? Come on, there we go. Okay, so I'm taking dictation.
Okay, it's like an abbreviation for Veggie Girl. It's V as in Victor, G, 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 I, G, R.
It's giving me trouble here. Okay, that's V, E, G?
G, I, two G's.
Oh, Veggie, yeah, okay.
G, R, L.
G, R, L. V, E, G, G, I, G, R, L.
At AOL.com.
Oh, well, that's easy to do. Oh, what's happened there? At AOL dot com. Okay, what happened here?
Do you want to put your email in the chat then to Abby? And then maybe Casey can get.
AOL dot.
And you can.
Com.
Casey as well.
You will attach them.
Or Casey, you could put yours in the chat.
I'll put mine in, and you can reach out, I can try to help, help you locate someone.
That would be great.
Let's see what I can do here. That's not going to work, so we'll go down this way.
Do you know how to see the chat now?
With two everyone, I put my thing, and how do I send it?
Well, there, Casey put hers in.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay.
Just put it in and hit enter.
Oh, oh, boy, something I, what did I just do here? Yeah, I put it in, hit enter. Oh.
There it is.
Yeah.
All right, so you should see it in about 15 seconds.
So I'm kind of interested in that article myself, Peter, if you don't mind.
Well, all right. Okay, well, since I'm here, that's easy to do.
Okay.
I'm, again, taking dictation here. What happened?
Okay, I, I put mine in the chat, but I'm happy to give it to you. It's Casey, which is spelled C-A-S-E-Y.
Okay, I said Casey at the back.
Yes. At Optimal, O-P-T-I-M-A-L, rhythms, R-H-Y-T-H-M-S dot org.
Okay, that's Optimal Rhythms, R-Y-T-H. R-Y-H.
R-H, R-H-Y-T-H-M-S.
Yeah, I forgot the H. R-H-Y-T-H-M-S. Well, that's the way it should be.
Dot org.
Dot org, yeah.
Abby, you know how, you have mine, right, Peter?
I do, from your emails that you sent.
Let me see what we got here, and I'll attach this bad boy right now. Is that going to come up the right way? Yes, it did. So let me, why am I not finding it? Oh, because I wasn't looking in the right place. That's why I didn't find it. Okay, there we go, and he's thinking. Okay, so you should see that one shortly too. Well, okay, here it is. Yeah, I'll do that. And he seems to like it. Okay, so, did anything bounce?
I got mine, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so nothing bounced yet. Looks good. All right, so there we are with that. Yes, I look forward to Valerie and me getting some kind of a project going on Corona Norco, because it is a really horrible district.